We're about ready to go, we're a couple of minutes early, but we have a big crowd, we have a large agenda today, so we'll start a little bit early. So, welcome, thank you all for coming. Changing our procedure just slightly for this meeting, we have people from out of town here and I'm gonna have them make their presentation first. After we approve the minutes, I hope everyone from the board has had a chance to look at the previous minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes in the last one? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all the favorites? Okay, minutes approved as read, alright, next on the agenda is a presentation from Joseph Construction and Biblioteca on our book drop system that we are trying to put into the library. And we have Molly Haynes and Brian Pastrick, I think, from Biblioteca, and we have Greg Brinkley from Joseph Construction here. And because they have to leave and they're from out of town, they're going to make a presentation first. As far as the board is concerned, you're gonna ask questions of them, and then we will vote on this later under whole business, that's okay. Yeah. Let me shut off my telephone, because it's talking to me. It said, that's what I thought. Okay, Molly, do you wanna?
Yeah, could I just say a few words about that too? I do want to thank Molly and Greg Fuin from Dallas. So, and Molly's from Nashville and, oh, Brian, I'm sorry, Brian from Dallas, Greg.
I'm from here.
I thought this would be a wonderful opportunity for them, and they've been working on this hand in hand since day one, which is tremendous. They've been communicating with one another, be emails or through Zoom. So, for those in the audience that don't even know what we're talking about, book return system. You're seeing them around other libraries in the country. Patrons are returning items, they're driving up through a drive thru, or some of them, it's happening inside. And they'll put the item through this conveyor belt, it'll check it in, and then the conveyor belt will drop it off in the proper bin. So, if there's a nonfiction book, it'll be checked in, goes right down a conveyor belt and goes in the correct bin. So, that's what the system is. I do want to say right off the bat that this system will not, will not replace any staff, definitely not. This is for better service. So, back in 2020, we had forty-five staff here, okay? This was right before the pandemic, since then, we have thirty-five. So, we're down ten people, and that's a problem. Our circulation is starting to go back up, things are getting back to normal. So, we need something to help our staff who are already overworked and just at their wit's end when it comes to providing service. And this is a great, great service that we have here. How it currently works right now, if a book gets returned, have some of you used the book drop before, the outside? So, you drive right up, you drop the book in the slot. What a staff member will do is they bring their book, bring the items to a check-in station, and then they check it in, and then it goes on a shelf, and then it gets returned to its proper location. What this will do is when a patron drives up and drops off an item, it will automatically check in. And again, it will, through a conveyor belt, go right into its proper bin, so we're saving some time. Time that the staff can now use to help service everyone here in Blount County. It's a no-brainer when it comes to that. The current book drop, as you can see, it's an eyesore. It really is, it was an afterthought when the building was built. And then the interior is even worse. We have water that comes through, sometimes the books get in between the walls. I mean, it's, it's seen better days. So, with this new book return system, that would eliminate that book return, that current existing book return attachment. So, I have worked with Biblioteca in the past, I've been working with them since, I think, two thousand and four. It's been a long, long time. And they'll speak more about their company, they specialize just with libraries, they only work with libraries. And they have a plethora of services that they offer. And this is something that we've been exploring here for a while, and when I came on board about a year ago, I definitely, this needed to be remedied quick. So, if you look on the screen to, if you're looking on the left of you, and then, board, we do have it in the packet as well. That's the conveyor belt right there, so the item would be returned in, and then would go down the conveyor belt, and then into its proper book drop, or bin, excuse me, bin. It's pretty simple. Again, we've been working with Joseph Construction and Biblioteca for many months about this. And I think we're all on the same page, we want to present this to the board. Molly or Brian, would you like to say a few things about Biblioteca, please?
Sure, I'll start. Biblioteca is a, as Manny mentioned, a organization that only works with libraries, mostly public libraries. We have about thirty thousand unique public libraries that we work with across the globe. We sell, as Manny mentioned, multitude of products that are basically patron-facing, and that help libraries do more when they're in situations like Manny described. Just in North America, we have more than three hundred installations of these types of solutions. And to be honest, this is a critical part of many libraries' day-to-day operations. Many of them can't really function if they don't have this type of solution. And if they were ever to remove it, it would cause a major problem. So, from a global standpoint, that's a little background on Biblioteca, and I'll talk, I'll let Molly speak a little bit about the collaboration with Joseph Construction.
Thank you, and so, this AMH design was designed specifically with Blount County Public Library in mind. So, the idea is to give the staff more workspace so that they have more freedom to move around. And also, we spent a lot of time assessing the circulation, the workflows, and also keeping in mind the patron experience. So, looking at the drive-up return window and making sure, the idea is to get the hold off accounts as fast as possible, and having the patrons have the best experience. So, when you're driving up, making sure that user experience with the staff return and making, having that ease of use in mind. And so, we spent many calls with Greg at Joseph Construction and on with our AMH designer to see what the best possible customization would be for your library. And so, this is what we came up with, and the idea is, as Manny mentioned, with having staff going from forty-five to thirty-five, wanting to anticipate a rise in circulation as a result of the efficiencies that are going to be gained by having an automatic sortation and the efficiencies. We want to make sure that there's a possibility for an expansion after evaluating this in the next twelve months. So, what we did is have a seven-bin sorter with additional staff workflows, and then having the expansion possible, and then four additional bins. So, again, when summer reading comes and there's additional children's materials that are going to be added, the staff will be able to have the flexibility to move about the workroom and also move the bins. So, this is what the AMH will look like in the workroom. And I will now let Greg speak to the, what the workspace will look like.
I didn't realize I had to make a speech. I'll keep it down to twenty-five minutes. Pictures?
Are you looking for the?
The outside photo.
Sorry, they're on the spot, Greg.
The items on there, the carts are spring-loaded carts, where the books go into those carts, they raise up so the boy does not have to reach down into the bottom of a cart or pick it off the floor. And also, there are extra carts along the wall, so when the librarian takes the cart and takes it out to the floor, a new one goes in its place, and she has then the rest of the day to, or he, to sort the books out to the floor.
Greg, do you want me to keep going, or is this where you?
There's some other pictures, it shows some of the.
We do about fifteen thousand books or items a month, just to give you some idea why we want this process.
Existing outside of the buildings, you can see this appendage would have to be demolished and taken down. The roadway would have to be redone, all the stemwork, this curtain wall, storefront, this glass. We have a lot of leaks here and broken pieces, so we're trying to come up with a native. To keep that as it is and just repair it, and then the machine will have a, like a port, think of a bank ATM, with a canopy open, so you drive up and you drop your book in. So, all this will go away, we've got a street light here, or it'll have to be moved back, and some infrastructure, we need to take this. We go back, go backwards to the inside. Right here, we'll have to take out this section, delete this section, and then modify the walls and fix the ground wall. Put it back, we try to minimize as much interior work as we can. We also have a wall down the side, which, which you can lock this space up, and you can have an ingress in case of fire, to keep bodies from stacking up, you know, so everybody can run away. So, anyway, we're probably, there's a lot of work, it's kind of nasty work fixing all this stuff back once we pare it out. So, that's what, what a lot of the cost is.
There will be new bollards placed in front of the glass windows.
And number grading for the access, new paving to bring the road.
And for anybody who's given in, there will be new curbs and a new road, so you don't have to run your tires up over the curbs.
Cars will have to come up closer to the side of the building, put a little oning out over it so you won't get wet. Plus, this afternoon's sun, you'll think, you'll see your T-screen too, so it's probably thinking of that as well. So, and again, all this is budget, I made it up in my head, so.
From the board, does anyone have any questions regarding Biblioteca or Joseph Construction on this project? Something we've been talking about for a long time, you voted on this once before, with Manny here, we held off so that we could redo it again and make sure that he was on board with this.
Talk about your town.
Okay, good.
Time frame.
Our part of doing it, the machine is walking six or seven minutes away. And that would fit in with us, we'll probably, that far away at least, with our current lack of, things. Probably a couple of hours worth of work.
And Biblioteca, you said what, summer?
So, it's about a seven-monthly time, it is a custom use of, of putting it for the library. So, we need a purchase order to start custom ordering that, so it would be around fall.
Talk about the difference in the renewal fee, the support and all of that, what, what does that mean?
Can you say the difference?
Yeah, because you had, if it was paid upfront, or if it related, and it obviously went into every. What do you mean by paying upfront? Like, the five years upfront, or one year, or?
So, there's just an option to prepay the support and maintenance, and a lot of libraries will do that, because then if there's fixed prepaid support and maintenance, or there's an option to pay that on an annual basis. And there's just a cost savings associated with prepaying. A lot of libraries, if they're doing that upfront capital expense, like to have that fixed prepaid support maintenance option. And there's the cost savings associated with that.
What's involved in that? In the support? What do we get for that kind of money?
Yeah, basically, we have local technicians that if anything goes wrong with the equipment, we send them out. We have twenty-four by seven phone support, so if you call in, we would log tickets. There's a portal that you can also log a ticket that way. Most of our engineers, well, combined experience in our engineering group is about, well, an average of about twenty years working on these things. So, they are your support team, and we have local folks that would come out, and anything that goes wrong with it, it would get fixed.
And replaced?
Replaced, yep.
And what's, where is the closest technician?
He lives in Chattanooga, and you have to benefit also, we do have an AMH installation about an hour away. So, you know, with a lot of experience, our technician has been in the business working for over thirty years, so he has a lot of experience.
Biblioteca is involved with Johnson City and as a Montgomery County?
Those are the two installations currently in the state of Tennessee, yes.
I have more, this might actually be more to the minute. If the proposed, proposed area where it's getting installed with that existing study room, right next to that, would it be worth repurposing that area or even demolishing it to make room for further expansion if needed?
Are you talking about demolishing that work-study area?
Yeah, opening that up, making more workspace.
I don't want to do that, and that, that was actually thought about too, about, talked about that, but they get utilized constantly.
Do you think, is there any concern about abilities or activity being, from the machine being in direction?
We, I've, I've watched videos on it, I know Molly, these things are so silent, they're not loud at all.
Yeah, fifty-five decimals.
Can't be any louder than the current book drop.
That was discussed too.
Actually, they will pick up some space when they, they take out the glass windows that are there now, and move it over and create the new corridor. So, you'll have a lot more space than they actually give now.
What, what could go wrong with the belts? You know, what kind of, is there any kind of a warning system? If something were to get stuck, or caught, or quit, or, you know, how do these librarians, they're not going to be back there all the time, how do they know something's wrong?
Yeah, there's a couple of different things, there's web-based tool that can notify them if it loses connection to the IAF, to the database system, if a, if something gets jammed, those types of things. There's also visual lights as well, that period, or if something were to happen, say, an article floating or something like that, there's emergency shut-offs. But we, like I said, we have hundreds of these installed throughout the country, and that's, they're more precautionary measure than they are anything else.
Much training is there?
Yeah, it's pretty extensive. I will tell you, once these are set up, it's more of, just, you know, once we get it set up with the, the proper bins allocated to what categories of books you want to get them sorted to. There's not a lot to do with them, they just kind of run right constantly. Many libraries leave them on twenty-four-seven, but there is extensive training on the front end, and we provide that as well.
And that's all included?
It's on.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll vote on this a little later, if you don't mind, we'll just move on. Thank you so much for coming, any questions for, for either, either of the three before they leave? Especially for Joseph, because it's gonna tear up the book drop. You're gonna have to come inside, drop off your book. And I know he's gonna do it as quickly as possible.
I do have a question. So, right now, construction costs are coming down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't take questions.
You can't take questions from a gallery? Oh, okay, well.
But you can write it out?
You said, does anybody else have questions, or had a question? I apologize.
Okay.
If, if they have a comment, they can come up during public input, I think you should ask one for the board.
Now, my question was specifically for Joseph Construction.
So, questions to Joseph Construction.
Come up afterwards and ask us, cover it. Okay, thank you very much, thanks for coming, we appreciate it, I know you came a long way. Well, that's a little bit of what's going on in the library and what we've been working on for a while. There's a lot of other construction things going on, and just, we'll get through our minutes and our website, see what's happening. Okay, I would like to thank you all for coming. Typically, we, we give two minutes to anyone that would like to speak. We have a sign-up sheet, and so, if you would state your name and where you live, so we know what part of the county you live in. Go ahead, you have your two minutes. Anita Blatnick.
I haven't said anything yet. Just so everyone knows, as you come up and make public comment, I'm gonna give a hand signal when you have thirty seconds left in the two minutes, just so everybody knows, and you're prepared for it.
You want to turn that mic around?
Oh, I need to turn it on. Got the mic on, give us one second.
How's that, can you hear me?
A little bit.
Barely.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, my name is Anita Blatnick, I live at two-three-nine Wilson Avenue, Mirable, Tennessee, three-seven-eight.
Oh, you don't need to.
You know, do you all that? I'm also on the DDRV. I've been a registered nurse for almost four years and a women's health nurse practitioner for over twenty. I've taught sex education, I've taught childbirth classes at Blount Memorial Hospital and student nurses A and T. I tell you this because I want you to know that I am passionate about people being informed about their bodies and their health, and I am concerned about a small but increasingly vocal movement that is trying to limit other people's access to such information. Unfortunately, book challenges are not simply about an individual community member expressing their point of view, but rather are the result of a coordinated effort to restrict access to certain subjects. The goal is to spread fear by cherry-picking excerpts and presenting them out of context. Fear is real, it's our reactive primal emotion when presented with something that may be dangerous. Here's an example of one of the Blount County Library books that's currently being used to frighten people. It's perfectly normal, written for ages ten and up. Let me assure you, this is a great, comprehensive, and age-appropriate book on human sexuality. Parents, teachers, pediatricians, psychologists, and clergy were all consulted about the content. It is one wide-prized praise from pediatrician T. Barrett-Brassleton, Child Magazine. Yes, there are dangers in this world, but not from books like this one. As humans, we also have a cerebral cortex to help us determine whether something really is dangerous or not. I wonder how many people who have been reacting to social media posts have actually read this whole book? I have, and I agree, maybe your ten-year-old is not ready for everything in here. Then again, there are plenty of young people starting puberty around then and wondering if their changing bodies and feelings are normal. Maybe your thirteen-year-old needs something that's in here, or maybe they're not even quite ready, but that's where parental guidance comes in. Most kids will not pick up such a book unless they're, my, oh, okay. Most people will not pick up this book unless they have questions. And as a nurse practitioner, I see some of those consequences when people don't have access to good information. So, thank you, board and staff, I know there's a lot of pressure out there with this trend, and we support you.
Appreciate your applause, but if you could hold on to the end and tell everyone it's finished and brother, it's just gonna be a long meeting. Bruce Dixon?
Yes, I'm Bruce Dixon, I'm from Rockford, Tennessee. And a friend reached out to me last night and told me this meeting was taking place today, and I just knew that I wanted to add my voice to the chorus of those on the sides of equality, justice, and love. And because this effort banned books from people in our community that have to do with stories that follow into LGBTQ and whatever, it's about more than protecting the children, it's not to protect the children at all in actuality. When you take away children's access to books that represent their lives, the little girl who actually has two moms, or the little boy who does have a trans parent, then you're taking away their ability to feel like they're a part of this world, and like they have a connection, like they really value, like they're valued, like they matter. And those kids deserve better than that, they do have value, they do matter. And anyway, Blount County that I've grown up in, once upon a time, we were in a dark age where we didn't have gay, straight alliances at schools, we didn't have gay-friendly businesses like Burden Book and Southland. And we shouldn't allow anyone to drag us back to that dark period, because we're better than that. And I hear many people say, y'all means all, and I really feel that that's what true southern hospitality is, is being inclusive with everybody, making sure that all the gay, trans, lesbian people and families and kids know that they're valued and respected here and that they're a part of our community, and that we're on their side, we're on the side of love. So, thank you for hearing the comments.
What was the name?
Joan Worley.
I live on Indiana Avenue in Central City, Mirable. The American Public Library is the best example of democracy that I know of. In the library, who you are, your skin color, creed, ethnicity, how much money you have, your politics, gender, and non-gender, don't mean a thing. Whoever you are, come on in. The library truly is of, by, and for the people, all of the people. But rarely do we think about the values and ideas, ideals it represents. Chief among them is the freedom to read. Libraries have a bedrock code of ethics issued by the American Library Association, ALA, and rooted in equality and freedom. There is no Department of Libraries in Washington, DC. In America, we do most things, a lot of things, in associations. From the United Way, NFL Rotary Club, American Medical Association, AMA. ALA is a grassroots organization of librarians studying on new and better ways to serve their communities. The ALA Code of Ethics was written by librarians. It states that personal beliefs and opinions do not affect the selection of materials that libraries offer. The materials are chosen not for any one clientele, but for the community. All of us. The Library Code of Ethics, quote, "affirms the rights and dignity of every person." Libraries, quote, "uphold the principles of intellectual freedom." They are of, by, and for all of the people, right down the line. They resist all efforts to censor library resources. Anything else is undemocratic and un-American. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm Ross Perko, I live off of Old Black Mill Road in Blount County. I've been a patron of this library for twenty years, my kids grew up here, my wife worked here. I volunteer with friends and buy a lot of their books, Bruce knows. Eyes light up when I walk into the book sale, next weekend, I understand. Anyway, I understand you may be hearing challenges with some books in the children's section, and that some of those might be based on content about lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people. I want to speak up in favor of my family and auto-right to read these books. My kids grew up in this library. Many of these books didn't even exist, weren't even written yet, when they were young enough to read from the children's section. I wish that they had. I think my kids would have understood themselves better and some of their friends better if they had access to these books. As a kid, I might have understood myself better if I had access to some of these books. I am queer, and it took me a long time to be honest about that. If some people don't like it, they don't have to read these books. What they absolutely cannot do is tell me and my family what we can read. These objectors are violating my rights and my kids' rights. It's telling that we have a process for them to object to books and remove controversial books. But where is my process as a citizen, as a human being, as a parent, to challenge that removal? I mean, I'm not angry at you all, but I am angry. I'm angry that somebody else gets to violate all right. I'm angry that somebody else gets to violate all rights to read and all rights to know. The library exists for all Blount Countyans, and I am a Blount Countyan. I have been for twenty years. My wife was born at Blount Memorial. My son was born at Blount Memorial. I belong here. We belong here. And I'm not gonna let some extremist come in and tell me otherwise. I expect my library to be here for me, and I hope you will support that. Thank you.
Is Julie? Sorry, I was a little slow.
Okay, I'm Kareem Julie, and I'm a, I live in Blount County. I live in Mirable. And I'm saddened to see politics is trying to creep in here. I feel that the library should be non-political. There's a big push to like just obliterate LGBTQ right now in the new laws that are being pushed, and it looks like they're trying to push in here too. I feel for these poor kids that need access to these books. LGBTQ gay people, everything has been around long before we were, and it's gonna be around long after we're gone. And these kids need a resource. Let's say a family member comes out. They're gonna wanna see something that makes them feel that they're not totally different. These kids that come out are having a hard time. They have a higher rate of suicide. And just knowing all this stuff that's going on and hatred, and you know, now they're thinking of taking away their resources, I think is very sad. I raised my kids outside a gay community, and I worked in a hospital outside that gay community for thirty years as both an RN and an NP. And I, my kids grew up accepting them. And they were around, dragged around everything. My kids are straight, but they had a choice if they choose to, to not be straight. But the difference in them is they're accepting. They accept LGBTQ, I'm sorry, LGBTQ and others. They're not surrounded by, they do not proclaim all this need, and I hope that you guys don't either.
Just so everyone is, if you come up to speak, one finger, thirty seconds left, two fingers is your time for two minutes, all right? Thanks.
There's water here if anybody wants any water, and feel free to just walk around the side. Don't hit anybody as you walk. Okay, Shannon Bryant.
Hi, my name is Shannon Bryant. I live on Hummingbird Drive in Mirable. And I'd like to tell you a story. When I was growing up, my family had the musical Seventeen Seventy Six on VHS tape. I know that dates me. It was something that we hauled out every Fourth of July, and there's a scene in there where the Continental Congress is deciding whether to debate the issue of American independence, not whether to declare independence, but whether to debate declaring independence. And they call the role, and it's split down the middle because Stephen Hopkins of Rhode Island is in the privy. And they call him in, and he comes in looking like an old mountain man, and they tell him what's up, and he says, well, in all my years, I've never seen, heard, nor smelled an issue that was so dangerous it couldn't be talked about. And then he votes yes. And weirdly, that is the ethic that I have brought to fifteen years of parenting. My son is an honor student at Mirable Junior High School. In my home, there is no issue too dangerous that we can't talk about it, and that has served us well. This book, that apparently has so many people upset, would have been welcome in my house if I'd known it existed when Daniel was of the age to need it. Which brings me to the point. The folks who are against this book are not trying to protect their own children if they have them at home. Their children are not free ranging in the public library because there are issues too dangerous for those families to talk about. Instead, they are trying to tell me how to parent my kid. They want to limit the information I can access for my child, and that is wrong. Thank you. Would you like this book?
Hi, my name is Brian Baker. I live in Mirable. I have, I've lived in Mirable my entire life. I was born here. I went to school here. I own a home here. And I came out when I was sixteen. And to tell you that that entire time has been like really good would be a lie. But over, over the course of my life, is I've had significantly more good interactions with folks than I've had with that. And it's because I think, like a lot of you, the folks here and I were raised to be kind and to mind our own business. And that is not to say that you don't, you know, speak up when something's going wrong, but when people are just living their life, you just let them live their lives. And the folks who are pushing these book bans, they certainly do not know how to mind their own business, and they are certainly not kind folks. Many of them have pushed not just against the LGBTQ community, but call, you know, the less fortunate blights on society. Just do not, do not exemplify the sort of values that I think Blount County really lacks to have. And it's not to say that I agree with everybody in Blount County, but most folks that I've met were raised with those two principles, to be kind and to mind your own business. And we have to push back against these folks who are coming in to tell us how to live our lives because we know how to live our lives just fine, and we do not need their help. Thank you.
Amy Kelly.
Hello, Distinguished Board. My name is Amy Kelly. I live in Mirable. And I was educated at Mirable College. I studied religion way back in the day. And I just remember the college and the library were my favorite parts of Mirable. It's really the crown jewel along with the park to me, and was one of the reasons that drew me back when we were relocating back to Tennessee from being overseas. I said, well, at least there's the library, Mirable, that we can hang out at. I'm a seventh generation Tennessean, and I have two kids now. So anyway, I can understand why you would serve on the board of the library. It's a truly special place here. So I have a ten year old daughter who didn't feel comfortable enough to be here because sometimes adults don't behave very well at public meetings these days. But I did ask her. I did tell her that we were having a discussion about banning books from the library and wanted to know what she thought. She said, this is unfiltered. I don't think there should be old people books. No offense to anybody. So I had to understand a little bit more, and I said, well, what do you not like about old people books? And she said, well, they're just old, and I said, oh, I think you mean old books. She said, yeah. And I said, why don't you like old books? And she said, well, sometimes they say things that are inappropriate for this day and age. Oh, okay. And I said, well, are there any other things that you think should be talked about? And she said, I don't think that the gun books should be accessible to everybody. And that hit me, and I thought, maybe this is because of all the active shooter things going on in school, but she said, just as long as it's well organized, I don't think they should ban any books. So I just wanted to bring her voice. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lenny Tipton. I live off Harper here in Mirable, and I grew up in Blount County. I am a proud Appalachian and a United States Air Force veteran. I grew up in this library. I am two generations away from dirt floor poor. And you older folks in here like myself, you know what that means. My grandfather fought in World War Two, and he fought against fascists. And he told me that fascists are the only people that want to ban books because everybody has a right to learn and everybody has a right to access knowledge. I grew up with that belief. You should have seen the Scholastic Book Orders that my mother would put in for me, hundreds and hundreds of dollars, and I spent countless hours in this library as a child, and my children have too. This is the safest, most wonderful place in Blount County. It is a resource for everyone, and there is no reason that Appalachians who are proud and independent should have anybody tell them what they can and cannot learn about, or what their children can and cannot learn about. There is no purpose in that other than control. And I don't know about you, but I don't know too many Appalachians that like to be controlled. So the idea that any of us would be told that we don't know enough to parent our children, to police them for what they check out of the library is a ridiculous idea, and I think it is a slap in the face of every proud independent Blount County Appalachian. We are responsible for our children. We know what they're reading. We bring them to the library for these purposes. This is a safe space for everybody, and everybody should be welcome in Blount County. Everybody should feel safe in this space. This is the holiest of houses in Blount County for everybody. Thank you.
If you speak while they're applauding, it gets hard. I am Forrest Erickson. I live in Mirable, Tennessee, about four miles south of the mall. I come to speak on behalf of Freedom of Ideas and for the vigorous competition in the marketplace of ideas. And I would hope the value of such a view is obvious to all, and that the dangers to freedom of suppression of ideas is also obvious. However, I must assume that the calls for the suppression of ideas will not cease. So let us see where this might lead. From a well-known, but not well-read book. Both thy bondsman and thy bondsmaid, which thou shalt have, shall be of the heathen that are around about you, and of them shall ye buy bondsman and bondsmaid. Moreover, of the children of the strangers that do sojourn among you, of them shall ye buy, and of their families that are with you, which they begat in your land, and they shall be your possession. And ye shall take them as an inheritance for your children. After you inherit them for a possession, they shall be your bondsman forever. Now, I want to be clear. I condemn Leviticus twenty-five, verse forty-four through forty-six, and I would argue that the book that it is in has and continues to harm with its ideas, people living all over the world. So I ask, should that book be suppressed or vigorously examined? I hope it is the latter, but in a list for suppression, I would place that book on the top.
Good evening, board members. My name is Steve Wildsmith, and I'm blessed to have been a part of the Blount County community for over two decades. From the day of the times to corso of recovery to Mirable College, this has been my home since I returned to East Tennessee in two thousand and one, shortly before this institution moved to its present location. I'm here this evening because of a growing social media and community chatter about the potential removal of books that certain factions deem offensive, specifically those pertaining to the LGBTQ community. As the parent of three children, two of whom are voracious readers, my wife and I avail ourselves of library services on a regular basis. And I would hazard this, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm sorry. My kids have gone through numerous book bar from the shelves in the children's library. Curiously, they've never been traumatized, scarred, or horrified by any books on the Blount County Public Library shelves. Why? Because my wife and I are responsible parents, and we monitor the books our children's peruse, read, and check out. I can't seem to recall a single instance when books launched themselves from the stacks and into my child's hands against his will. I can't remember a time when he slipped one of these books through the checkout without me noticing. Perhaps we're fortunate in that our library visits have not involved such trauma, but I feel fairly confident that parental oversight and choice are reasonable enough safeguards to prevent such things from happening. Because here's the thing. Just because my kids haven't checked out these books doesn't mean they won't. Whether they do or not should be no one else's choice. Books, whether it's perfectly normal, or the art of the deal, or the Bible pose no threats. They provide illumination and knowledge, and their availability should be protected from political agendas. Removing them from this institution does nothing except bring partisan division into an arena where it has no business. It is the antithesis of freedom of choice, and I urge you to reject any consideration. Thank you.
I'm down here. Good evening, Board. My name is Wendy Wond. I am, I live in the city of Mirable. I have been raised here, and I am choosing to raise my family here as well. And in that choice, I feel it is my responsibility as a parent to decide what comes in and out of my child's hands and when he has access to those things. There are a lot of things I see as open access, and I want to make sure he continues to have that access. There's a lot of ways that I don't have control over people that are controlling what he has access to when he is outside of my home. But when he is within my home and we bring him to this library, he should have access to whatever he needs. And whatever comes next in his, in his child-rearing years, I want him to be prepared, and me as his parent, to be prepared for that as well. And these books and all the books you have in your library are currently allowing us to have access to that, and I want that to continue. Not only am I a member of this community, I'm a former member of your foundation library, and I know that you already have policies in place that give me this power as his parent, and I encourage you to continue with that as well. I am in charge of him, not you. You don't have to worry about that responsibility. I get to worry about that. And so I encourage you to continue with the policies you already have in place for that as well, and to help us to stay equipped and educated as much as possible on how to equip our kids to be healthy and safe and good, loving members of our community, whatever aspect of that community that might be. I know you're hearing from a lot of voices today, but just please remember that we really believe in what you are already doing to keep our kids well-educated and safe, and believe that we are also doing that in our homes. This library is supposed to be representative of everyone in the community, not just the loudest voice. And so I hope the people that are standing in front of you today are showing you that we have a lot of different types of people in this community, not just one. And so continue to allow this library to represent all of us. Thank you.
I'm Mindy Lunsford. I live on Hendrick Drive in Mirable. I've lived in Blount County my whole entire life. So has my husband. Our children have library cards. They check out lots of books. And I feel that my children should have access to whatever books that they would like to read. As they're small right now, I can see what they read. I get to choose whether or not we check the book out or we don't. And as they get older, there's more books that they should be allowed to read and check out, and they shouldn't have any books banned that they cannot And they shouldn't have any books banned that they cannot read or have access to. I'm also a nurse and I have been nursed for twenty, over twenty years. And I do see lots of patients who are LGBT. And those people should have access as well to books, especially in a high school or teenage years age, so they can feel accepted and understand what they're feeling. There's a high rate of suicide and drug abuse among that community because I feel like a lot of them don't feel accepted or don't have a place to be able to read and understand that there are other people out there like that. So I don't feel that any books should be banned from our library. I feel like the library should be a place where anybody could come and read whatever they would like.
I'm sorry. James Lineman.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I agree that parents have the right to decide what their children read. They do not have the right to decide what other people can read or what their people, what their children can read. Simply put, other people's rights and where ours begin. Excuse me. Having a wide diversity of thoughts, ideas, and lifestyle is important to our community. And this is also important for people's development at any age. Any attempt to restrict what people write and what people read is against our First Amendment rights. The book banning started with our school libraries and now is moving into the public library system. With us having a daughter who is a middle school librarian, we're well aware of the havoc and prowess this begins. This is concerning to all who want true freedom in thoughts and words. We moved here in two thousand and fifteen and we've moved seven times. And whenever, whenever we move, one of the things we look at is what type of library does it do they have? And when we looked at this library in two thousand and fourteen, we were so pleased not only with the size of the library, but the contents. I want to thank all the other speakers who expressed their support against book banning and your careful consideration of our comments. Thank you.
Hi, board members. Thank you for your work that you do, your time and expertise you give librarians, us as community members. My name is Crystal Irwin. I live in the Springbrook community of Alcoa. And I'm mom to a fourth and eighth grader at Alcoa. I have a Bachelor of Arts in English Literature, Muette Knoxville. And I read about a hundred and fifty books a year. I'd say about half of those are um, on Libby audiobooks from the library and the other half are paper. I don't like ebooks, but I like the paper books in my hand. Um, but they're almost all from here. I don't buy books. I get them here. Um, values that are very important to me and my family are diversity, equity, inclusion, and representation. The library already has a policy, I'm sure all of you are aware, um, on collection, development, and reading materials. And I've got this online. Anybody can get this. It's free to the public. And these are some quotes that I took from it. "We value intellectual freedom, innovation, diversity, and inclusiveness." "The library upholds the right of the individual to secure information, even though the content may be controversial, unorthodox, or unacceptable to others. A balanced collection attempts to represent all sides of controversial issues." "Materials available in the library present a diversity of viewpoints, enabling citizens to make the informed choices necessary and a democracy." "All public libraries contain materials that some patrons may find objectionable." And then regarding the children's section, the youth collection, youth services collection, quote, "This library does not assume" uh, the parental role. Okay, so I'm gonna skip some of this. Um, because I'm running out of time. It's not the library or a community member's right to choose what our family can read. It's the adults in my household who are me and my husband. And I'm curious of the people that want to pull books have read them cover to cover because context matters from someone who reads a lot. Um, and there are people in our community, especially people under eighteen, that may, might not feel safe at home or at school to ask about things. And the last thing I want to say is queer books are not just for queer people. They're great.
Thank you, board. I'm Reverend Nathan Irwin. I live in the Springbrook community of Alcoa. And um, I am standing against the banning of any books. I want it to be known that I trust the library and the librarians. My family spends a lot of time here. We love the library. And I don't think that you all would put any books out there that are inappropriate for my children. Um, and I believe that it's um, un-American for anyone else to choose what I or my family can read. I am in support of any of these books that um are being proposed to ban. I think that um, the ability to read and learn is essential to um, American democracy and I don't want to see anything banned. So I um, just would ask that you would vote against this and that you would um help these people to trust our library and our community and our parents um, in the community to judge what is best for their own families. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Givens. I live in the Springbrook area of Alcoa as well, and I did not prepare anything. And these are some tough acts to follow. I think um, I just want to piggyback on what most of the folks have said here. I wasn't expecting this to be, you know, as great a turnout as it is with it being one-sided um, against book banning and surprisingly, it's nice to be in an echo chamber of that kind. Um, I just want to point out, um, I'm an attorney. I've read a lot of books. I've read a lot of stuff that's really offensive, things that I completely disagree with and I'm so glad that I can. Um, and I also took an oath to defend the Constitution. And so while I'm standing here in support of my LGBTQ neighbors, I also want to stand here and defend the people who have I think ignorantly requested this ban because there may be books that we find offensive that they want on these shelves and they have a right to have them here and to read those. And we have a right to read it and understand a differing opinion, a differ, differing side of the argument. So, you know, I want to protect my comp as much as I want to protect these books on LGBTQ communities. And also as a parent, I want to be able to make these decisions, just like all the other parents here. Thanks.
Thank you for listening, Steve. Um, I'll kind of make it quick and simple. I don't understand that any of the books, I mean, our children can turn around, go home and turn on TV. Can I watch TV lately? But we're banning books. To me, I think this is just to rile people up and get people warmed up. Don't make sense. I mean, parents have rights. Excuse me, children have rights. I mean, just think about it. Does it even make sense to start out with books? I mean, it just, you turn around and it's everywhere. Are we gonna ban the internet? Are we gonna turn off TVs or are we gonna start? You know, that's up to parents. Control. Um, but to help their children make the right decisions and what to watch and what to look at and what to learn and there's so much talk against gays and it's just so much hatred out there. You know, I think we should just kind of leave it alone. It's worked for the last couple hundred years. Why try to fix something? Hey, Brooke. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Stephen.
Melston.
Um, my name is Scarlett Melston and I live very close to the junior high. So I come here pretty much unprepared. I heard about this problem today in class, actually. But I decided to come here to voice my opinion because this is such a prob, like such a huge issue to me. I am someone who is queer and as someone who is queer, it is so horrific to find, to see that people want to ban books that particularly to have topics of uh, LGBT identities and stories, especially because I read a lot. And those stories coming from a homo, homophobic household have helped me stay strong through that. The fact that ban, that we are even thinking about banning books just horrifies me because if we can't speak of different, of different issues, of different ideas, then why teach our kids to speak? Why teach our kids to listen? Why teach our kids to do anything and to listen to other people? It is horrifying to me again because what is our world if we cannot communicate different beliefs, different ideas? From the most terrible horrific beliefs to the kindness. We all deserve to hear each other, no matter what those ideas present. Thank you.
Can I, Dylan?
Hello, um, I go to Marable High School. I live in Marable and I'd just like to go off of what my friend Scarlett said and just, I believe that the library is just somewhere where all opinions can be brought, all like ideas, so many ideas that I've never heard of, so many ideas that you've never heard of can be brought to a place where everybody can find them and everybody can learn about them. And it's what really creates a mixing pot of ideas and beliefs in our, I mean, in our community. So I believe that all of these books are important and I, as someone who grew up here and went to this library my whole childhood and even now, I wish that these books were so prevalent whenever I was younger. I wish I could have read these. And I wish my peers, uh, especially the high school, could have read these because I feel like people would have been a lot more understanding. And I feel like it's just, I feel like it's a very simple thing to bring to the table to help people understand. And I just think it's a very important idea to spread in that if we set this precedent that we're going to start banning things that we don't like, we're just going to get rid of things that we think aren't fit for our society and are fit for our community to learn in. Then what does that mean for the rest of ours? What does that mean for the future and what does that mean for the future of our generations? I believe that the parents should have the right to choose whether or not their kid is going to learn something, just like they get to pick if their child will go to public school or stay homeschooled or what, whatever else their child does. Thank you.
So, hi, my name is Cox and Audrey and I'm a Marable High School student and I go to Marable and I live within the community of Marable. One of the aspects we heavily value as a society is diversity, this concept of diversity that no matter who you are, no matter uh, maybe what culture you affiliate yourself with, what religion you affiliate yourself with, what sexuality you are, you have the same opportunity to hear the diverse perspectives of the community as any other individual. So I'm highly concerned by this trend that's of course been popping up within recent times of banning books. The unfortunate side effect of banning books that anytime you ban a book, you willingly or unwillingly censor part of that discussion and part of a community, part of any community, one of the most important aspects is facilitating a discussion. If you have different perspectives than another individual, that should be no, it should give you no prerogative to silence the perspective of another individual. To really hold up this standard of diversity that we have within our society, I believe it's strongly important of us to make sure that any individual, any individual's voice can be heard. One of the most important avenues for this discussion to occur, of course, is through libraries. Public institutions such as our libraries, such as our public schools, um, should have this priority to not feel, make anyone feel marginalized. And of course, people can be marginalized when you ban a book. If you have an idea that's present within a book that maybe talks about different concept relating to human sexuality or talk about uh, problems that historically happened with a certain group of people over time and you ban that book, you shut down that conversation. And when you shut down that conversation, you walk this dangerous, dangerous tightrope that can easily can easily cause this facilitation of discussion to ultimately end. Therefore, I would like to strongly support against this trend of banning books. Thank you. Thank you.
Probably was our last scheduled speaker, so thank you. I want to say just a few things before we move on. I really appreciate everyone coming up with the kind words you said about the library. The library is a special place in Blount County. It's really close to all of our hearts and we really enjoy working for the library and for you as a community. Uh, the library is open to everyone. You don't scan anybody coming in the door. We want to. I, I really appreciate the concern all of you have for the children and I want to congratulate those students who spoke up. The state of Tennessee has a system on how books are evaluated and worked at. And I wondered if Manny, Manny Lee, who is the director of the library, would just talk about what the process is if, if somebody is not happy with a book.
Thank you, Manny. So, excuse me. It's been mentioned several times this evening, policy. What is this policy? I think some of you do have these, a policy in front of you.
And the policies are available online anytime anybody wants to look down.
Yeah. So if you do want to see our policy, go on our website. You click on about us. There'll be a list of policies. I believe it's in the left-hand margin there. And you will see our uh, Blount County Public Library Collection Development and Reading Material Policy. Our policies are looked at on an annual basis, at least they will be. Moving forward, the last few months, we've been doing that. And everything's laid out there. So things that you heard tonight, this evening, it's gonna be laid out. If you have any questions regarding policy or anything. My. Okay. Okay. You can contact me at bcpl dot director at lunttn.org. It's two Ts.
Any book that somebody has a problem with, we ask that they fill out a form that we have. Fill out the form. The form comes to the director of the library. Then it is ref, that, that is reviewed. It goes and is assigned to a librarian in the library to read the book and write a report on that book and present it to the library director and his staff. And it is reviewed. We do not pick and choose individual books. It is a, it is a, we have a group of people who buy books for the library based on uh, based on presentation from, what is it?
Yeah, book reviews. Yeah.
Eighty-five book reviews across the country from other libraries, from, from writers of the, of the books, uh, or the creators of the books. And, and we are giving some books. And some of the books that have been on the list have been given to us by like Kiwanis and some other uh, other organizations. So once those books are reviewed and Manny reviews it, if they have any questions about it, then it is taken to the board. The board then is, creates a committee to read the book, review it, and then decide what to do with it. So it is not a process that takes one or two weeks. This takes months. And we seriously look at it and we don't ignore any comment that's somewhere next to us. We look at it all. And.
You pretty much said everything in that policy and, and it doesn't matter which book it is. You know, we have an obligation and a duty to review any book that comes in front of us.
And we have an obligation to the community. There's no question. No question. Do you pull a book whilst being reviewed? You have pulled the book out of the shop?
Pull it out to read it? Pull it out to read it?
Yeah. Some of the books that have been talked about in the newspaper have been checked out. But not necessarily checked out by us to look at it. They've been checked out for other people. Check it out.
I have a question. So I'm curious. Sorry, there's a. So do you report to the community what the book, it was challenged and what your decision was? As far as keeping the book on the shelf or not? Do you share that information?
We just communicate with the person that brings the, yeah, brings the complaint to us.
The, the director responds to whoever brings it in. If it comes to the board, then the board would, would respond to the community. It's public record, but at this point, we have a head.
I have a question. Um, there's a trend to pull out little excerpts and then just bring a book. Do you require the person who is challenging those books actually read the book themselves?
Well, yes.
It could be something to just pass.
That is a question on the floor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question. Um, on your agenda, down at the bottom, other library meetings. It says Blount County meeting, is this going in front of the commission?
No, thank you. Those are just other meetings that could be something library involved. They're always listed on the agenda.
But it's not something that's.
No.
So we like to do this, all of the meetings if we possibly can. Some representative from the library tries to go to every, whether it's Alcoa, Marable, or Blount County. And we have two members on our board from the county and Alcoa. Commissions.
When a book does go up for review, what's the criteria that's used to determine whether it would be removed from the stacks or not?
Could you repeat that again? I'm so sorry.
When, when a book does go up for review, what is the criteria that's used to determine whether it would be removed from the stacks or not?
So I'll, I'll briefly talk about that. It is stated in the policy, the librarian would read the book. We would also look at reviews of the book. We'd also try to find out more information on the author's inspiration behind the book. We also read the American Library Association Bill of Rights, the freedom to read and be, uh, freedom to view statement.
Thank you for your questions. We really appreciate. Thanks for coming. We really appreciate that. We're fine. You all want to stay. You're absolutely welcome to stay. We appreciate it. Fun. You all are welcome to stay. Appreciate it. Recorded the library report. What's been happening, uh, as far as I can, what I'd like to do for, for right now is I'd like to take a moment of silence for personal prayer for Joy Bishop, who just passed away this past week. I hope folks have gotten to be Joy. Joy was principal fundraiser for this library. And she is an awesome person for the community and helps in almost every aspect of the scene. She's responsible for the library in Marable. She will be really truly this. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. I get to speak to, um, Joy's daughter and her attorney and on her deathbed, Joy was still talking about the library, which is unbelievable. And things that she would like to see done for the library, which Manny and I are going to discuss and we're going to discuss with commissioners. One of the things that her daughter has asked, and we have, I'd like the board to talk about this, is that Blount County or Marable has no roads or bridges named after a female. And so I would like the board to at least think about naming the bridge or recommending that the bridge that goes from Marable to the library in honor of Joy Bishop. So think about that. We'll, we'll talk about that under new business, but I'd like you to think about that. And we can't do anything about it. We don't, we don't own the bridge, but it's something that we can recommend to, to Marable City. There are going to be two openings, uh, on the board. And we have to have a committee for nomination in place in March. So I'd like you all, the board members, to think about. Who would like to be on that board before and volunteer before I appoint you? And, and so let, let me know if any of you are interested in being on the nominating committee. And let me know before the March.
Marable and Alcoa.
One, one in Marable and, uh,
No, because I'm one.
I think one is, one is county. I'm Marable, Donna, Donna is county. Both of us are eligible for reelection.
Yeah.
You, you've already been. All we're talking about is nominating committee. That's all we need.
Shake your favorite meat. So sad.
Yeah. As a nominating committee, in addition to members is for officers for next year. My term is expi- is expiring and I cannot be re-nominated for that position. Okay. In, in addition, uh, uh, and Manny's going to talk about this a little bit. I had a opportunity to talk to, uh, ex-governor and Senator Lamar Alexander in the last couple of weeks. And Lamar came to me and said he would like to do, uh, something for the libraries. And so we talked about some things and Manny will talk a little bit about what we, we, we then met with him and Stephanie and Manny and I met and we discussed some of the things that he would, he would wanted to do and we'll talk about that under Manny's report. We had Manny's review. Manny has been here a year. Hard to believe. Time has flown by. It seems like we've been to meetings trying to define a new director. Uh, we obviously chose the right director. But his review was this past week went well. It, it, you had copies of part of the review last time. Stephanie did a breakdown, our comments from all of you on his review and you have copies of it. And I wanted you all to see it. That was shared with Manny and it is now in his file and on public record, on record with the personnel department of Blount County. And it was a good review. He thought we were too nice. And that's it for my report. Manny?
Yes. So my report will begin with youth services. And if you haven't gone to the youth services department, there is now a stage and a puppet theater on top of the stage. Um, and the kids absolutely love it. They, puppet shows and I think next month they're going to do and it's like an open mic night, but it's for kids only. So I don't know if we'll get stand up or singing or maybe just them talking to the puppets, but children's, uh, youth services department's going to be doing that. It's going to be a lot of fun. Uh, Storytime has been crazy busy. We had in the month of January, three hundred and fifty kids attend Storytime and it's just going up and up. We had the Knoxville Symphony Orchestra Cup in the month of January and they accompanied Storytime, which was really well done. It was really nice. Um, I've never seen that before and they had done an excellent job there. Move right along here. Uh, let's go to adult services. We had the seat swap on January twenty-first and we had a hundred and fifty people, um, swap seats, is that's the term that they did, swap seats. Which was great. I, I had stopped by. It was on a, it was on a Saturday and this place was so busy and it was great to see. Uh, this is my second seat swap. I had just started, uh, last year when they did it and it was, it was great. I'm just moving just for sake of time. Let's talk about hospitality services. Um, our cafe, which is doing gangbusters, they, their sales increased fourteen percent from the previous month. So since December, month of January was up fourteen percent, which is excellent. And that Chelsea's in the room now, but she does a tremendous job. When you see it, just give her a tap on the back for the job well done she did in there. We also, staff also had, um, the American Heart Association had CPR, AEB training. Um, so that was tremendous. We had a, a good amount. And thank you friends for, uh, setting that up. That was, uh, great to do. And again, I'm just moving right along. So starting in twenty twenty-four, not only will Blount County Public Library be a location for early voting, but it will be a location on election day. And that'll be moving forward. Again, starting in twenty twenty-four, we'll, of course, still be early voting up until then. Andy and I went over to Lewisville and attended one of the workshops and met with Mayor Pugh and, and the, uh, alderman. And we talked about the library and one of the ideas that we had brought up and go into a little detail about this, having lockers, um, at the Lewisville Town Hall. Now, when I say lockers, I'm not thinking like, like school lockers or lockers you've seen in the gym. These are like Amazon lockers or like the lockers you'd see at Lowe's or wherever. And you see them at gas stations and grocery stores. So one of the concerns I've heard from patrons is the distance. Sometimes they're driving from Friendsville, they're driving from Lewisville, parts of Alcoa, and just to get here, they don't have the time to do it. So we're thinking of an opportunity for them to go to a location and pick up their items at a, at a, at a closer, uh, to their resident. Um, so we had brought this to the mayor and the alderman, uh, last month. They're gunning home about it too. They think this is an excellent, uh, opportunity and service and if successful, we're going to do this all around the coun- around, not around the country. We're just going to stick it out. No, not do it the country, but all around the county as well. Uh, we're working with a gentleman, Robert McClelland, who will be writing the grant for it. So we are working with that. Again, like what Andy said, we met with, with Stephanie and Andy, um, with Lamar, former governor Lamar Alexander. And, um, he was talking about a couple of items that he'd like to see displayed at, at the library. One of them were some older Tennessee maps. And I think, what did, what was it, Andy? They predated like seventeen?
Pre- hey, before, before Tennessee became a state, all of them were pre- pre that date.
Yeah. And they're tremendous condition and we're going to showcase them and we're thinking in the hallway over here, uh, but we want these to be secured. And we don't want anyone just picking up and walking up the building. So, um, we're working on getting the proper equipment to have those secured. We'd have our maintenance team hang them and of course we'll do something with Mr., um, Alexander and the paper showcasing these wonderful maps of Tennessee. The other thing that he had brought to us is that himself, as well as Sam Houston, resided in Blount County and were governors of Tennessee. So I am going up to Vanderbilt in early April to speak with a curator who has, um, artifacts and displays from Sam Houston and also Mr. Alexander. And eventually we're going, the plan is to have them displayed here again in a locked section. So then we can display some of these two governors, former governors that reside or had resided in Blount County.
Turned out we're the only county in the state that's had two governors. So we thought we'd do something for it.
Um, well, we don't hear it today, but they were working on the roof today. Um, they weren't before they were working on the roof. I, I, I had a funny feeling they were going to be working on it during the meeting. They, they must have known, so they stopped. Uh, but that project is still on schedule. It's supposed to be complete in April. And I did bring up the remote lockers before. Um, I just want to say again to the, to the evaluation, I, I was, again, I was floored by my review and, um, there's a couple of staff here that, you know, it takes, it's a team and I, I've always said that. And just working with you guys, you know, and then especially these two right here, they have to really put up with me most of the time. Just working together, excuse me, as a, as a, as a unit. I couldn't do this without them. And they know how much I appreciate them. And I've always said that I have your back and I guess they also have mine too. So very happy about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions for Manny? One of the things I skipped over was the, the events calendar in your packet. Uh, if you take a look at it, it's a really packed calendar. I want to, one thing that's not on here, but it is in the front. As you walk in the door and that's on the thirteenth, the lecture sponsored by the Genealogies Society, which is talking about the, the individuals from this area, uh, who had an incredible background and, um, affect our local town again. So hopefully you come to that lecture again and listen to it. It would be excellent. Thank you for doing the calendar. It's great to have you. Okay, um, foundation, Chad, Heather.
Thanks, Andy. Um, a couple of you were here last, uh, last meeting. My name's Chad and then I introduce myself to those that were here. Took over for Angela this year. We had our arts meeting, um, last month and our, our primary focus was trying to add important board members and we have identified a couple where we're wanting, I think I mentioned last meeting to, to have about nine. We have six now and so we're hoping to vote on some new board members at our next meeting, which is going to be March, um, fourth. We have, we're, we're moving to meet on the third, Friday, uh, month and, and all on the spring break through school. So we're going to move to March meetings. That's all I have for now.
Thanks. And we are very fortunate to have that can, excuse me, outstanding, uh, foundation and friends and I guess we have Bruce here from the friends. Yeah, well. I can talk for you. You do an incredible job.
I'll be brief. Um, our president is currently going through the Panama Canal on a cruise.
Our president is currently going through the Panama Canal on a cruise. She's lucky. Couple of things, one is this has been a fantastic month for us. eBay, which is our electronic sales arm, this in January made the highest number I think we about ever did. Well, something like fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the month, which is amazing. We did the CPR AED training earlier in the month. That went quite well or seems to be possible interest to do that again. We have an upcoming sale, March second, third and fourth. We're hoping to, we were getting that advertised, hoping to have a good turnout for that, which I think we will. We have two active committees along with other older committees, but two relatively new committees called membership committee, which meet once a month and the sales committee, which meets every two weeks. And, and our idea is to just sharpen the point on our, our focus on providing service to this library. The BCFOL website is up and running. It still has maybe one or two glitches, but it's currently up and running. It has been converted over to a new platform and we've had meetings and a lot of good work going into that. Thank you, Brianna. And we're also working on a number of pop-up sales. We, these are small sales, we'll fill a couple racks of books and bring them up to a concert or a, an event. Like we recently did the seed, the seed swap. And we had a small pop-up sale there. And we, we have a whole list of these that we're gonna support over the next six months. That's pretty much it.
The friends do an incredible job. Last, was it two weeks ago, someone walked in and bought every cookbook that they had downstairs. Just unbelievable. It was two hundred or three hundred.
But we have hundreds of them.
I don't know what they were doing with them, but they they bought them all and more coming in. All right, wanna introduce Lily Shrek, Liz is our representative for the state for our region and her reply.
Well, first half certificate gets to pass out for trustees who were at the trustee workshop. And I'm terribly sorry, I wasn't able to give you these in January. So this is for Andy Simon and I have one for Stephanie Thompson and Don Reagan. And I know Logan, Logan is not able to be with us, so I can put that to Anna if you would. And then Manny, I have other certificates. Of course, a large part of what we do is training and professional development. And so Manny, these are all certificates for you and your staff who are attending our inversions. Speaking of that, we had a list, of course, I won't go, I'll take a brevity, I won't go through the whole portion. But we had a great training with Labam, which is a service that our state library and archives has, which is the library for accessible books and media formerly known as the library for the physical and handbags. Really glad to have that service. We're trying to bring awareness so that our library staff know that that exists and how to refer patrons to that. So Ruth Hemphill came and presented a training on that and let our library staff and directors know what all they have. And that it's a great service and it's really trying to get utilized. So she came and then March fourteenth, we will have Nikki Brandt Snyder, our assistant director, will be doing creating inclusive and accessible storytimes about adapting programming practices to meet sensory, physical, cognitive needs of children who come in to our storytimes. So then the only other things we have, I have listed out the standards for public libraries for budgeting because we're at that time of year where anybody start looking at budgets. And so it's important for our libraries to do the same thing on the boards. And then really we have a challenge for, to our board members, to the board members who are completing the trustee certification program, which is again, an online ten module online program, training programs at your own pace. So if you have questions, I think everybody's registered at this point, but if you're not, let me know and I can do that for you and eliminate that step. You all talked about board member recruitment and then we have the regional IBCOM audio book download systems statistics on the back.
Any questions for Liz? Thank you. Have you set the date for? Okay, we skipped over the budget. Does anybody have any questions on the financial report? It's a wonderful report. It's great to see it every month. Good job and good job for, for the staff for maintaining the under budget and over in the positive sections. So good going, amazing. Okay, good meeting, moving on to old business. The first old business would be the scheduling for a project plan workshop. And to get a couple of the date, and that is to review the old plan from twenty eighteen on what we're going to do with the library going forward.
So March twentieth is the date that the most people could attend. There are a couple other dates where less people will attend, but right now it looks like Monday, March twentieth, which would be the Monday before our March board meeting. Has eleven people out of the thirteen invited, I think, that could attend. I originally had it from five to seven, that can be adjusted to five thirty to seven thirty, whatever works best for you all. And I
And this is
Whatever room you all
This is just a strictly a meeting to talk about how we're going to proceed, to go through this, what we wanna do, if we wanna break into committees, how we just wanna proceed going forward with this report. This is, it's not something we can knock out to others. This is gonna take and see where we wanna go for the future. And what this is, is five years ago, the library staff and community members made a plan on what to do with the library going forward. Some of the recommendations are really no good.
Ambitious.
Some are ambitious, some have nothing to do with today. They were interested five years ago, but not today. Today, we, we have a lot of new things that we need to talk about this class. And so we're taking a long look at this. We, we agreed about a year ago, two years ago to, to just drop this and, and move forward with a new plan. So that's what we're gonna be, how to, how to move forward. So that'll be on the twentieth of March.
Do we need a motion to schedule that?
I think we could just do it and let's just put that out there.
Does five PM work for everybody or do you wanna say five thirty like the door for meetings?
It's something that works on Mondays, five thirty would be better.
You got it. All right. Yes, I'll put out a public notice for that and I will send you all.
I think I said I would feed everybody, but I was told that you were gonna stay there that long. Okay, okay.
I'm gonna be there two nights in a row. I will not be here the twenty first because I have kind of a But I can be your mentor.
Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the proposed borrowing privilege policy that we sent in the, in the packet? Any questions on that policy? And I need a vote to go to adopt that?
I appreciate them looking and making adjustments to that. I guess we need a motion before we talk about it.
So any questions on that? And who did the, the cross outs in the red? Thank you very much. Great job and it's so much, so much better to see what the changes are and in a different color. It's great. So I have a motion, I need a motion to accept this new policy or, or the rewritten policy. Do I have a motion to accept it? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then go in our programming.
Yes, I have a
All right, next is next circulation. And it's the proposed circulation of library materials and policy.
I do wanna point out there is a highlighted line in there. That is, has been changed from when it was presented to you all in January. That highlighted line was added, so that is the change from when you saw it in January. I just wanna point that out to y'all.
Any questions on that policy? And then the highlighted area for those of you that are sitting here at twenty five cent charge will be assessed to a patron who, who has reserved a book and doesn't pick it up.
Manny, when, when do you expect to start implementing the fines?
I was proposing July first. It is enough time. To get it out there, we're gonna bring back five.
Part of this policy is reinstating the fines in the library on overdue books. Twenty five cents for every, every day for anything. Correct, not, not just books, but also tapes and circulars and magazines and whatever. And the reason that we, as we stated last, last month is people are starting to realize that they don't have to pay, so they don't have to bring that. Twenty five cents is nothing, but it, it's an incentive. So we, we would like to do that. So do I have a motion to accept this new policy?
And the motion, if you all are gonna, it would be a motion to accept the new policy and then also the statement of fines on July first. And that all be part of the motion, so that it's not, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Oh, I understand.
All in favor, any, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Any old, any other old business? Something I asked, yes, I wanna talk about the book drop, I'm sorry. Book drop is old business, we have voted on it in the past. This is, you saw, you heard the presentation, you saw in the manual. In the past, when I brought this up, I had put a budget, this was my, my budget of three hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we presented and this is slightly more than that at three hundred and forty one thousand. I think it's well worth it. We are going with a local company who is going to watch it all the way through, including doing the architectural and, and the passing through the government policies. So they'll ride it all, it's just construction. Because we're self-funding this, it's not something that we have to put out with it. Any discussion on, on the book drop?
I just have a question, because it's a different, I want to write up a new foundation funding request. Are you all to vote on instead of, okay, we'll all write one up for the March meeting, okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept this proposal and present it to the foundation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? I have opposed. Motion carries. Can you write that up? Thank you. All right, under new business. Proposed confidentiality library records policy. So everybody had a chance to look at that and any comments on that?
These two are pretty much boilerplate, nothing to flashy with both of the policies.
Okay, we'll vote on this next time. Just here for you to look at, we'll, we'll, and read if there's any comments. The next is the proposed interlibrary loan policy. Again, that's pretty much dry. But I want you to take a look at it and we'll talk about it in the next meeting and go on it. All right. Moving on to funding requests. And that is a funding request going to the friends of the libraries.
So first one in front of you is a filter, an air filter for the Glowforge three D laser printer that has already been purchased. It is like a, I don't know if you're familiar with a cricket or almost like a three D printer. But you also need an air filter to be attached to it. So the equipment's here, but we haven't purchased the air filter to add to the Glowforge laser printer in order for it to work. This would be in the new services section. In your packet, there are some photos of the Glowforge itself and a couple of projects.
Any questions on, on this? If you stop by the children's department and see what they've done with it, what they do, it's incredible. I don't know, wanna speak on it for a second, is there anybody? I know my grand, two of my grandchildren have this printer that can make just about anything. It is, it's so much fun to have. Do you have one?
I, I don't have one yet. They use three pressures to make three printers.
Okay, we don't, we vote on that now or? Okay, do I have a motion to accept that and to present that to the vote? I'm sorry, to the friends for funding.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then there's one additional friends funding request and this is for paint in the team room. As some of you know, that we have the library experience, the great flood of Christmas Eve twenty twenty two. And unfortunately, the children room did, excuse me, the team room suffered some damage. But part of the rehabilitation of that room is to paint the two walls in there. So the request is to, I mean, yeah, let's see, is it three? Five gallons, five gallons of sea wave. Oh, all right, I thought it was five gallons. So yeah, it's about the team room. So we can get that up and running and have our team room.
So we have a motion to paint it, buy the paint for the team room, here are the friends of the library.
So moved.
For a second.
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you need it, if you haven't gone by the T room, it needs it.
And the maintenance department, the county maintenance department, they'll be responsible for the paint. They will do it.
Okay.
A lot of the former president.
Any other things to bring before the board? Manny? Hey, I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
And a big play, thanks for saying that tonight, I'm talking right now.